Hello ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, we're about ready to get your 8th District meeting underway. We got a lot of informative speakers on the agenda tonight. And I do see in this room, come to pay us a visit, the Chief Law Enforcement Officer in the City of Richmond, not the Police Chief. Let me make mention, the Chief Law Enforcement Officer, for forty-five years of dedication to law enforcement and keeping us safe. I do say Sheriff C.T. Woody, can we get a round of applause? Thank you Sheriff for coming to visit us. And now ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to introduce, the hardest working council person on the Richmond City Council. Let me bring forth and introduce, the Honorable Reba M. Trammell, your 8th District Representative.
Thank you Henry, thank you all, thank you. First of all, I want to thank you all, I want to thank all of you for taking your time to come here tonight to be with us. And we all know that Ms. Lois Braun, she fell in front of her apartment yesterday, and here she wanted to be here. She's never missed a meeting, and she said, "I'm ninety-four years old and I'm not going to start missing them now." So we want to thank her with all of our hearts for coming here tonight. We love you Lois, we love you. And I love all the rest of you, I love everybody in this room. And here we have the mother that just hurt her baby, her little baby. And she wanted to bring the baby here tonight, to let it all of us know that she appreciates all that we do for her and her family. Thank you. And all the business owners, women, bless them, hey you know what, last time I forgot to thank Mr. Ms. Lee and their family for allowing us to have our meetings here, right? We want to thank them, because we're out of school now. We'd like to thank Mr. John Hewlett. He takes our photos, and he won't, if you tell him not to take your photo, he won't take your photo, okay? Because some people say, "I want my picture taken," or he won't take it. Just tell him, but all of y'all are pretty, all of you are pretty, right? But thank you Mr. Ms. Lee, thank you family members for allowing us to have our meeting here, and for all that you do for not only 8th District, but for the City of Richmond. We all know that Mr. Ms. Lee always helps all of us. And also the business owners, I'm not going to mention them because there's so many, I'm here, they don't want to be mentioned, but I want to say thank you all from the bottom of my heart for what you all do for our community, especially when there's seniors in need and there's children that's been in need. I want to thank all of you. And our church, the preachers, and the pastors, and church members, thank you all for what you all do, okay? We have an agenda, hey look, 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 there is an agenda, if you don't have an agenda, raise up your hand. We got fancy tonight, we got very fancy. I'd like to thank Deborah Handy for all of her hard work, and Henry Meese, and Gloria, and Brenda, Mary, and all the other volunteers, Peggy, all of you, Angela and all her daughters and friends, thank you all for coming out, and Boss Man, thank you too. Alright, we're gonna change the agenda, listen, listen, we're gonna change the agenda around just a little bit, okay? I know the first thing says police and fire, well we know that the fire department's not here yet, okay? So we're gonna ask, our 8th District School, no, no, listen, this guy's gonna say, "What did Reba just say?" And we got some special guests here, I did not put their names on here, and I'm gonna tell you why. Because last time I had somebody's name on here, and something came up, and he was not able to be here, where you all called, some of you called me and busted me. So I said, "This time when we have a special guest, we're gonna let you all come and be surprised," right? That's right. Okay, so we're gonna ask Honorable, listen, our Honorable 8th District School Board Representative, Derek Jones, to please come up here. Come on Derek.
Oh, let's give Reba a round of applause for the great job that she does. Amen. And to the best district in the city, give yourselves a round of applause for 8th District. Let me just begin by saying, and I'm not gonna take a lot of time, because I know there're many speakers tonight, but let me begin by saying, it is a privilege and an honor to serve, to be a servant leader in the 8th District. And when I knocked on doors last year, it was all, it's, this day is heavy on my heart to make sure that the decisions that are made are always in the best interest of 8th District residents. And I just want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for allowing me to represent you. So thank you very much, thank you so much. Three things, and then I'm gonna get out of your way, just three things. The first thing that I want to mention to you tonight, is at the beginning of the month, the Richmond School Board voted to close three schools and to rezone some schools. And I want to make sure that you have the accurate information. The vote was to, in order to close a $1.3 million budget deficit, was that we would close one normal preschool, which I was in favor of all along, because they built that school on a landfill. And I believe that our children deserve better than to go to school when they don't even know if they're breathing quality air. And so we're going to move them into the Mary Scott Annex over by Genter Park Elementary School. The second closure was ACDC, Adult Career Development Center. Now, ACDC itself is not closing, the building itself will not be used for ACDC, but the programs, the charge and the challenge of the school board is to find the place to house the programs that were housed in that building. And we are working hard, we're working diligently, to make sure that the programs that were housed there are able to be housed at different places around the city. One of the ideas is that we'll put some of those programs into the Richmond Technical Center. And so, I'm hoping when we come back together next, I'll have some specific information as to where each of those programs will be located, but the ACDC building has closed, but the ACDC program is still alive and well, okay? How does that affect Southside, the school closures and the rezoning? As you know, Summer Hill closed its doors, okay? Summer Hill closed, that was not something that I closed, that was on a decision of the previous school board, and so I had to play the cards that I dealt. And so, what I decided was that we would try to do the best we could, in order to make sure that all of those kids are accommodated. And so, what we did was, and what will happen was, is this coming school year, the kids out of Summer Hill, most of them will filter into Broad Rock and to Oak Grove, okay? That's right. You're going to get letters notifying you this summer of exactly which school your child will go to. I've been working with parents already on an individual basis, and my cards are available tonight. For folks who have questions already, you let me know, that's what I do, I get answers for you, okay? So if you have a question even today, less than a week removed from the end of school, and I will make sure that you are confident in knowing whether your child is going into Broad Rock or Oak Grove. There are about seventy kids that will filter out of Summer Hill into J.L. Francis, because we did not want to create an overcrowding situation in both of those schools. Anybody that knows education knows that what's the key to education, small classroom sizes. And my goal was to keep as many kids as possible in Oak Grove and Broad Rock, but it's just not humanly possible to get everybody in there. So about seventy kids will filter into J.L. Francis, and we created an equilibrium such that none of those schools will be overcrowded, the classroom sizes will be what they need to be in order for your kids to get accurate attention and learning. And so, no kids will be going from Southside north of the river to go to school, let me say that again. No kids on Southside that live in the 8th District are going to school on Northside. Alright, and I just want, I want you to know that, one of the things that we also did in the, in the, in the school closures, was we said, and I told you in January, I told you in January, that we would not balance this budget on the backs of teachers. And I'm proud to say, that not one classroom teacher lost their job. Okay? Now, there were six positions, library and media services, and the Humanities Center, that we did have to cut some jobs, but that's considered Central Office. So people always say, "Well, why are you firing teachers, why don't y'all cut Central Office?" And so I listened to you, and I said, "We're not gonna cut and fire teachers, if we have to cut, we're going to cut at Central Office." Humanities is not going away, arts in the schools and music is not going away, we're reshuffling, and we're, we're learning how to do more with less, okay? Alright, and so I wanted you to be very clear on how we're moving forward. I am available to you if you have any questions about where your child, your grandchild, your nephew, or your niece is going to school. You call me, and I will make sure that I get an answer for you. I've worked with at least ten parents just this week, to get them that information. The second thing, or the, I don't know if it's the second or the third thing, the third thing, and I'll get out of your way. If you remember, you know, the newspaper this week got the wrong news in the paper. It got on the paper that two members of the school board had a disagreement, and, and I was sad when I left, because I said, "You know what, the right thing didn't get into the newspaper." There was some good that came out of that meeting, and, and I was just so sad. And the good news that came out of that meeting was, we were able to finalize Dr. Yvonne Brandon's exit contract, and finalize that, and so she's going to lead with dignity and with respect. And, what you may not have heard in the paper is, by this time next week, we should have identified an interim superintendent for Richmond Public Schools, okay? Alright? And so we're going to be interviewing, somebody said, "When I got on the school board, it's just two meetings a month," they lied, because there's a lot more than that. I'm gonna be working through the weekend interviewing candidates to be interim superintendent. That superintendent will serve us for about six to eight months, and within that six to eight months, we're going to do a community-wide process, an open and transparent process, where community members will have the opportunity come to open forums, to hear from prospective permanent superintendent candidates, okay? Alright, so I just want you to understand, that nobody's gonna hire somebody behind closed doors, you gonna know who's gonna be hired even, probably at the same time I know who's going to be hired. And so, I want you to know that we're making progress, we're moving forward. Another thing that's coming, and I'm gonna have more information in the coming months, is we're moving towards possibly extending the bell schedule for the kids, and providing a slightly longer school day that will give them more instruction, okay? The second thing is, and this is just an idea, but I, I like it, we may be, we may be begin, talking, beginning to talk about school uniforms, school uniforms. Now, it hasn't been decided, but it's a conversation that will begin to be had. I'm tired of getting my phone rung, because a parent is calling me because their child got beat up because he didn't have the best tennis shoes on, or the best jeans on, or the right shirt and the polo on. We need to put our kids on an equal playing field. And so that's just, it's something we're throwing out there, it's nothing that's been decided, it's a long way off. I'm interested in hearing your thoughts on it, because the way I represent is through dialogue, I don't speak for myself, I speak for you. And so if you want it, we'll get it, if you don't want it, we won't get it, as simple as that, okay? Thank you so much, my cards are available, I'm here to work for you, and I'm here working with Reba, my cards are being passed out now, if you need me, you call me, and I'll be right there, okay? Thank you so much.
Now listen to me, if y'all have some questions, because Derek has to go to another meeting, put it on a sheet. This is what the children say, write it on a sheet, right? Put it on the sheet. If you need a sheet, raise your hand, and we'll give you an extra sheet. There should be one in a package, but if it's not, raise your hand. Here you go honey, Gloria. If you need a sheet, raise up your hand. Raise up your hand high, and we'll make sure that you have a sheet. If you need one of these cards, if you need one of these cards that have the schedule on it, raise up your hand, because I know some of you just came in, you can have one of these schedules. Because I know some people said today, "You didn't call me last month, you didn't put your number down on the page, but your number, make sure when you sign in, you put your number down so I can call you," okay? David, we have another special guest, it's not on the sheet, it's not on the agenda, his name is David, Chris, or not David. He's in charge of the Richmond Symphony, Symphony, did I say that right? It's on our own just again. We're gonna give him a minute so he can say some great things that's happening. Hold on honey.
Good evening everyone, I only got a minute, so I'm gonna keep it very short and sweet, but I'm representing the Richmond Symphony, and we have a great partnership with the City of Richmond, and with the City of Richmond Schools, which we want to really keep building. You've got some little flyers on the tables, and they're about, a concert that's happening on the 3rd of July, and this is the third year running we've done this, down on Browns Island, with the Richmond Symphony Youth Orchestra, and the kids from Spark, and the kids from Richmond Ballet. So the park is open on the island from about 6:00 early, and at 7:30 we put on a free concert, so you can bring a picnic, and enjoy it, a wonderful evening, because it finishes with fireworks. And there's about $75,000 worth of fireworks that are being provided by Dominion and Medias Veeco, in partnership with the city, and it's the best fireworks company in the country, Rucci Brothers. So come down to Browns Island on the 3rd of July, and we'd love to see you there to enjoy the Symphony Youth Orchestra. And when you're not so busy at another meeting, I'll come back and talk to you more about the opportunities that we can provide for kids to learn music, because music in the schools is really important to help other learning, like the opportunity. See you at the symphony.
David, do you have any cards or anything? Alright, next, next month when we have another meeting, I'll make sure I get more information, more cards from David, but if you want one now, raise up your hand, he'll hand you one, okay? Major Scott, did you want to come up here now, or did you not bring up RHJ? Alright, we're gonna let him come up here real quick, come on Major Scott, come on. You won't remember him, he used to be our captain, remember, we trained him well, we trained him.
I'm gonna bring up my precinct representatives, and I'm only gonna take a moment of time. Come on up guys, come on up guys. Where's Mike Bender, is he hiding out there, Mike Bender? Oh, okay. Okay, so I love the 8th District, I do, I love coming up here, speaking with you, I don't get to see you as much anymore now that I'm a major, working downtown. Chief Karasovik sends his warmest regards. This is the most active and proactive group in the City of Richmond, I tell you. I have a young lady that's with me tonight, and I'm showing some different areas of the city. We're over in, in some of the housing communities in the East End, and down in Shaco Bottom, and I remember that this meeting was tonight, and I was like, "Your tour of Richmond will not be complete if I don't take you to the 8th District meeting, and, and introduce you to some folks over there." Lieutenant Hudson in the 1st Precinct, they've had a great couple months, where they, they really had some violent crime issues at the start of the year, and they've got their major crime down right now, negative five percent. Alright, so both of the precincts that, that I have represented here tonight, continue to do a great job, and do a good job for the, the men and women here from the 8th District. So thank you for everything that you do for us, just a couple things that I want to leave with you, I know Captain Mowers preaches this, he talks about this quite a bit, just make sure, if you see something suspicious in your neighborhoods, or if you need us, please call us, alright? Call us, write it on your comment forms, call Councilwoman Trammell, let her know your issues, so she can let us know. But most importantly, if you see something that makes you uneasy, or if you see somebody that's looking in your neighbor's car, or trying to get into your neighbor's house or what have you, please call us, so we can respond and take care of that situation, okay? Because we want to keep you guys safe, that's what we're here for, so just, just let us know what you need us to do, okay? Alright, thank you. Okay, so I just want to, I just want to draw your attention, Mr. Trammell just gave me that, the Help Needed poster in reference to Milton Francis Jackson, which is gonna be the homicide from July 24th of last year, at 3110 Jefferson Davis Highway at the Family Dollar. And this is a truly tragic event, any homicide in the City of Richmond, or anywhere, is a tragic event, but I was there that night, and, and this was just a tragic, tragic event from, from a gentleman, a newlywed I believe, that was just trying to make life better for himself and his family, and he was working right here in your 8th District, right here on Jefferson Davis. So if you have any information, please come forward, pass this out to your neighbors, to your friends, just so we can get some information, and bring some closure to this case, okay? Thank you very much.
Alright honey, good, tell her if you want, so it's Reba's, tell her she can have Reba's. And if you do not have one of those sheets, please raise up your hand, because this is very important, okay? You do not have one of the sheets, raise up your hand. Because you know what, we all know that in Southside, we talk, we love to talk, right? We talk. We know that there's somebody out there that's got a little bit of this piece of information, that little piece of information can help solve this. And we all remember when the wife came here last year, Michelle, and she stood up here and she cried, and she begged, "Please, please, somebody, whoever knows anything, just please tell, call the police, even if it's just a little information, that little piece of information might help to solve this." And you all know, we've been looking, working on a grocery store, working on a shopping center and all that, but who's gonna come over there when they hear about that? They're gonna say, "No, they don't talk." Yes, we do talk, and we're gonna solve this crime, we're gonna tell, even if it's just something we don't know if it would fit that puzzle or not, make that phone call, call them, or call me, or put it on a sheet, if you think that you know just something, put it on that sheet, and then it goes only to the police department, doesn't go to Mr. Mayor, doesn't go to anybody, but to the police department. And the other things that go to Mr. Marshall, or the code enforcement officers who are here, we give it to them, we don't give it to Mr. Mayor, doesn't go nowhere to the person that, that it goes to the department. Alright, I'm gonna say this too, we have this sheet right here, we want to help Tyus Holling and Paving, Malcolm, he's here with us tonight, we got a petition going around, Lauren, right? Got a petition going around, let's sign the petition so we can get some sidewalks over there, okay? Because we see so many people pushing their baskets and things like that, up and down the road, they have no sidewalks. And we could have some sidewalks over there, and then give them to a million dollar improvement over there, million dollars. They're gonna hire people and they have no sidewalks. So let's sign this petition right here, if you have not signed it, raise up your hands so we can sign this petition. Here you go honey. Yeah, let me just say this, I know someone said earlier, "I don't live over there," it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter, we're still showing our support, we're showing our support, but 8th District, we Southside, we're still showing the support. Yeah, that's right, come on y'all. It's right up across from Loving Productions, you all know where Loving Productions is? They moved over here in our district. So raise your hands, we can sign those petitions. Also, we're still changing the agenda around just a little bit, I'm gonna ask, is it okay, Ms. Schoolzby, is it okay? Is it RHJ, is that okay, if I just change it just a little bit more? Because I'm gonna ask the sheriff. Come on up here Sheriff C.T. Woody.
Oh yes, I know. Thank each and every one of you all, and thank you Councilman Reba Trammell, for when she asked me to come back, I always come back. We've been working together for years, and we'll continue to work together in the community, because that's where the unity and you all always get the job done. I see Senator Henry Marshall giving it, let's give him my ass. I'm gonna be very brief, I presented last time, I just want to talk about a few things. The sheriffs don't go around bad mouthin' people and talking about people, and just, most of the people that make the most noise are, the empty wagon always makes the most noise. It has been proven that we get the job done. Thirty-five years on the Richmond Police Department, homicide SWAT team, drug gangs, the wars, you name it, we've been there, we're proven to be leaders, we've proven to get the job done. Four years at the Richmond Commonwealth Attorney's Office investigating high crimes, and assistant attorneys, and all that kind of good stuff, we got the job done. The community asked me to run for sheriff around, and you all amongst the others selecting me to be as sheriff. I took over a rundown facility that all you all knew about, fat damages, dealing drugs, crime, going astray, and everything else. And we got the job done. Not bragging, I'm just telling you the facts. The facts speaks for themselves, almost 250 people, residents inside the Richmond City Jail, that have gotten their GEDs. We got, they voted inside the Richmond City Jail, they get three meals a day there instead of two meals a day. We have browned some people off that didn't want to obey the rules, and all of that kind of good stuff, so a lot of good things have been happening. There were two sheriffs prior to me becoming sheriff, they sued the City of Richmond, trying to get a new jail. When I became sheriff, I dropped the suit, I worked in partnership with the communities, with the councilmen, with the administration, and we got a brand new justice center. It's more than just the bricks and mortar, it's much more than that, than the building. And those people inside of the jail will have air conditioning, they will have heat, there'll be more rats and bugs and all that kind of stuff running around, it's a good thing, but it's because it's, it was because of the community. So yes, the justice center is here, yes, there's a lot of work to do, yes, there are a lot of people that want to come along for the free ride, with no experience, have never been in charge of anything, and raising a whole lot of cane, and all they do is complain. I believe in solving the problem, and we come up with solutions, not complaining. And you all over here in Southside know that you all come up with solutions, and we work together as a team, and we can get it done. We need to stop being reactive, and we need to be proactive. We need to build smaller jails and bigger schools, so we can educate people. No matter how deep and how big you build a jail, they can always fill it up. So we have to get our kids involved and be proactive, and our answer prevention is worth a pound of fuel. So we are going to work hard, we are not going to complain, we are coming up with solutions, and solving the problem, and doing what the citizens of this city want us to be. And we want to make better citizens instead of better criminals. Being on drugs is a sickness, it's not a crime. People that are mentally ill, they shouldn't be in anybody's jail, they should be at a Milton Institute. So I thank each and every one of you all for all of your support, for doing the right thing, your vote count, and make sure you let someone listen to those who complain, because when they complain, they don't have any solution. They're always talking about somebody else, but they don't have anything to break to the table, but to complain, complaining will get you nowhere. Let's work together as a team, and together everybody achieves more. Thank you so much for listening to me, and God bless each and every one of you. Thank you.
Thank you Sheriff, thank you, thank you Sheriff. If you all have any questions for the sheriff, what do we do, we put it on a sheet, right? Write it on the sheet, if you have anything for the sheriff, and I'll make sure that the sheriff gets it, okay? There are some chairs right here, if anybody wants to sit, some chairs, come on over here, there's some chairs. We got some chairs right up front. We've got some chairs right up front. Our firefighters have came in. And I want to thank Steve Taylor, our policy analyst, who showed up to be with us tonight. He's helped, he helps me with a lot of the public safety issues. Thank you all for helping bring the chairs. Thank you, Charles. Thank you so much. Honey, there's some chairs up here, if you all need a chair, come on. If you all want to sit in a chair, we have some chairs. Okay? We all have an agenda. Did y'all get an agenda? We got one. Okay. We have, this is the first time we've had an agenda, but we have to do some little changing around. But now we're going to bring up RRHA. This is Ms. Goolsbee. She's the director, is that right? Of RHA. Honey, you want to bring up the other stand? You all can come up here with her, don't be shy. Come on, don't be shy.
Don't be shy.
Come on, don't be shy, because Code Enforcement's coming up after you all, and we're going to show them how much we love them too.
Come on, let's go, Malcolm.
Come on, child. Come on, child. One more thing. Malcolm has asked me if you filled out those blue sheets, if you've signed them, raise up your hand, they will come by and pick them up, because they need those sheets. Because you all know, those petitions, they help us get things done. So if you've already filled out the petitions, raise up your hand. If you need to sign the petition, raise your hand. Also, let me say this. If you all have done your sheets, if you filled out the sheets, raise up your hand, and Lori and then we'll come back, or Bossman Muhammad tonight will come back and pick them up so I can have them. Please turn them in tonight. Don't wait till you get home tonight and call me and say, "Reva, come by my house and get my sheet." Okay? Raise up your hand if you've already done the sheets, we can get them.
Hello, good evening. I'm Adrienne Goolsbee, first of all. I wanted to thank Councilwoman Trammell for inviting us here from Richmond Redevelopment Housing Authority. We are excited to be here this evening. I have been here for a year in Richmond, and so I want to make sure that I came by the magnificent and infamous 8th District. Because I heard that y'all are doing it. So let me introduce us back, because I'm not going to speak long. We've got some things in your packets that we want you to have as leave behinds, but let me introduce my staff, because I want to let you all know that the work that we do, I can't do it alone. I've got great staff that supports me, just like you all have wonderful people within the community who support you. I've got great staff. So we've got Belina Dixon here, who's with the Crown Relations. We have our Asset Management Group, which we have Stephanie Horton, as well as Carol Jones Gilbert. We have Jeffrey Orin, who is with Intergovernmental Affairs, and also Public Policy, as well as Missionary Valentine, who is here, who's a part of what we call our Housing Choice Voucher Program, which you all know as the Section 8 Program. Okay? And so they're here today. We know that Ms. Trammell has a long built agenda, so let me give you a couple of facts, and then we want to make sure that we answer any questions that you have. So let me tell you the first thing. In your packets, or earlier, people were handing out two sheets of paper that have the RRHA logo on it, okay? One is, let me tell you, when we heard we were coming to the 8th District, we wanted to make sure that we hear any of your issues. So we have set up a hotline. And so you keep this with you, and this hotline, you can call. If you don't have one, let us know, so we can get, raise your hand. Can we get some extra sheets if they don't have them, so that we can pass them out, staff? We want you all, if you have complaints, issues, problems, the hotline number on here is 780-4746. Keep this with you, because we are going to monitor the calls that we get, so that we can make sure that we are responsive. I know that I'm new to the city, but I'm all about being responsive. It's important, and we as servants of the people need to respond to the people. So please keep this, and they are handing them out. We've got hands raised over here who don't have sheets. And then the second sheet is, if you want to write down what your issue is, or if there's something about application-wise, or you're interested in a question, we have this second sheet. And when they pass around the box to collect the citizen information sheet that Ms. Trammell typically has, and you all fill out those questions, you can put them in here. And what she's going to do, she's going to get that question to us. So this second sheet, you can fill out right now, and you can put it in the box. When they pass around the box and they're collecting all of the questions, you can put it in there, and she's going to get them to us, and we're going to contact you, okay? So one way, you can call the hotline, another way, you can write it down right now today. Okay? So we want to make sure that we're responsive. The other thing I just wanted to say is, there are three areas that the Housing Authority focuses on. One is, as you know, Section 8, which they call the Housing Choice Voucher Program. And so I've got some good news on the Housing Choice Voucher Program, and a little bit of bad news. And so I'm going to start with the bad news first. The bad news is, unfortunately, our HCBP waitlist is closed, okay? It is closed, because the government, as you all have all heard, yes.
Okay, now y'all stop it now. We're not going to have this, okay? She has taken her time to come here to speak to us, because we have been begging for one year. One year, we've been begging for her to please come here with her staff to help us. Now, we're going to show them respect, right? We're going to be quiet, and please. And that means me too, because I caught me talking over there about the chairs. So me have to be quiet too, okay? Because a little girl told me to be quiet. Okay? So now we're going to show her respect, and we're going to be quiet. Okay? Shh. Now, write it on your sheet, listen to what she's telling us. This is very, very important. So you all don't be calling me and saying, "Reva, we got this house, that house." Listen to what she's telling you. I stapled them together, they were nice enough to make them for us. We stapled them so you all could have this information. She's going to take the chair. The first part off, keep it for yourself, fill out the second sheet. Nobody's going to get that but me and her. I'm going to personally deliver it to her myself, okay? Now let's show some respect, please.
So unfortunately, the waitlist is closed. You've heard, you've seen it on the news. The government's got budget cuts, okay? They got budget cuts, so therefore, they're not funding any more vouchers right now. So that's the bad news. However, what they did continue to fund are vouchers for veterans. So if there are veterans who need housing, they need to go to the Veterans Administration, because we are housing veterans through the Section 8 Program. And so those vouchers are still being funded at the full rate, but we have had to close our waitlist right now. The second piece, good news, public housing, if people feel as if they need assistance from a public housing standpoint, the waitlist is open. However, waitlist for one and two bedrooms is closed. We do not have any one or two bedrooms, so our units that we have available now are three and four bedrooms. And so that's where we are on public housing. And in redevelopment, I think we're going to have another community meeting next week to talk about some of the redevelopment happening in the 8th District with Blackwell, which is one of our Hope Sits redevelopment efforts, and we want to talk about that. We're going to have senior cottages that are going to be built in that area. And so if there are seniors who are going to be interested in moving into beautiful one-bedroom cottages with gardens and things of that nature, we want to make sure that we get those folks on a waitlist as we start closing the development deal for Hope Sits. And so we're going to build 50 new senior cottages in that area. And so in there, I just want to say thank you for having us here. We are excited, and we are glad to have this relationship. Please, please put your comments on the forums and put them in the box. And Councilwoman Trammell and I, she's going to bring them directly to me, and we're going to make sure that we're responsive. And we'll let you know if that's our house or if it's not, okay? And so we want to make sure that we are good citizens too, because yes, we are a landlord, but we have to make sure that we are respecting the community as well. So thank you, I appreciate you.
Thank you so much. He wears two hats. Not tonight, just one tonight. Alright, honey, y'all, you all heard what she said, right? Take the first sheet, pull it off, so you can keep the number. It's a hotline on there, hotline. The other one, fill it out, put it in the box. And if you've already filled it out and you want us to come back, raise up your hands so we can get this out the box, I mean, so you put it in the box, okay? Anybody got any ready? Raise up your hand, honey, raise them up high. Who's Muhammad, Bossman? Okay, Bossman's coming around. If you need one of these, or you want an extra one, raise your hand, so you can give one to your neighbor. If you need an extra one, raise your hand, we'll give you an extra one. Lori, Lori, can you get them one? That's yours, honey. We have a special guest here tonight who even surprised me, Senator Henry Marsh. Come on up here, Senator. Senator.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
When Reba advised me to come, I come. This is a part of the 16th District, so I'm going to welcome those of you who don't live in this district, welcome to the 16th Central District, as most of Southside of the House Street, and a lot of other places too. I want to thank you for the support you've given me over the years, and I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be here, I wouldn't be elected to run for your support. Now that you, I see you, seen you many, many years, you supported me, and I promise you I'm not going to let you down. We have some promises. We have some promises. In November election, there's a chance we could lose everything. You'll be hearing more later, but we have to get those people who aren't registered to vote, get them registered before the deadline. Let's get everybody out to vote. The whole country is watching. Virginia.
That's right.
Virginia decided the last two presidential elections.
That's right.
And they decided which part of the control the Senate. And it's going to be the same this year, in November. So let's vote, get everybody to vote. We'll be coming back with the issues. And we'll explain both sides of the issues, but when you hear, I'm sure you're going to vote for the people we recommend. Reva's doing a wonderful job.
Yes, she is.
Glad the 16th District is a part of it. And I'll be back soon.
This is our Senator, Senator Henry Marsh. Senator Henry Marsh.
I used to come in years ago for dances, but I don't come in anymore.
He says he's coming back to dance today. Betsy, would you like to say something? Our delegate Betsy Carr is here, would you like to say something?
Thank you, it's always such a dream to be here, you all, and with Reva, and I'm so proud. To know Reva, and to be able to support her and all the work that she does in the council. I'm not going to take your time, but I just want to let you know that I'm available, you know, and with folks, I have the privilege of representing folks in the 8th and the 9th, and the 6th, and something north of the river. But it's my great privilege to be available to you, and please let me know if there's any way that I can be helpful. I want to reiterate what Senator Marsh said about getting out at the polls in November. You know, you all are the people, we're the people. We need to let our voice be heard in the November elections, because it's usually a drop-off this year after the presidential elections. We don't need to have that happen. We want our voice heard, we want whoever's elected to know that we had a part in that. So just thank you all for what you do in your communities, for how you're here every month, and what you're doing in your communities each day, on your streets, in your churches, in your communities. It's such a privilege to be with you, to know you, and I want to continue to work with you in any way I can. Thank you so much, and thanks to our wonderful counsel person, Reva.
Thank you so much. If you have any questions for her, please put it on the sheet, okay? Alright, we're going to ask David, come on, David, David Cooper from Code Enforcement. We'll give him a minute, okay? Because he's taking his busy time to come here to say hi to all of us.
Thank you. David Cooper, Code Enforcement, I supervise the inspectors in the second precinct area. I have five inspectors in this area right now. I'm also the city's devilsy coordinator. Good news for the entire city right now. Our grass-cutting program has kind of slowed down a little bit over the past few months. Right now, Department of Public Works has just put on four new contractors, got rid of the last four, and there's four new ones starting. Unfortunately, there's probably a backlog of about 400 something contracts that they have to catch up on before they start with the new ones. So the good news is, we're just not seeing some stuff getting cut the next, well, they started the last week now. But they attend each time, they get 10 cases, they do those attending another day. These people are money hungry right now, so we expect them to start hitting quite a lot, so 40 in weeks' time. It should knock the thing down within the next few weeks, we hope. So that's good news for the entire city. Code Enforcement, any questions can always be called in to me directly. Again, very easy email for any city employee is my name, that's david.cuber@richmondgov.com. That's like any city employer, it's always your name, richmondgov.com. My phone number is, best way is my cellphone, which I'm not afraid to give that ads on all the time. That number is 363-5497. Again, I can't, okay, cellphone number is 363-5497. Anyway, as I've told you, as I've done in past meetings, if you should be a recipient of a notice of violation from my office, I've told you, the most important thing you need to do is communicate with that inspector. The people that show up in the courtroom, so to speak, because we do enforcement, people that end up in the courtroom are the people that never give us a phone call and just ignore everything along the way. But by all means, you get a notice, we will work with you through completion, but you have to be communicating with us to let us know when you plan to do things, and so we can follow it through your time schedule. Like I said, I want to keep it short, there's a long agenda tonight, I don't want to keep you here all night. But again, any communication with me, email, telephone, I will get back with you as soon as I can, you know, definitely within the day. Thank you, and thanks for having us.
Thank you so much. If you have anything for Code Enforcement, what do you do? If you can't talk to them, write it on the sheet. Come on, children, say, "Put it on the sheet."
Put it on the sheet.
Write it on the sheet, and Muhammad or somebody will come back with the box, and they'll pick it up, and then they'll give it to me, okay? Alright, we're going to see, is Dr. Jack Lanier here? Dr. Jack Lanier, Richmond Behavior Health Authority? Alright, come on up here, Deborah Morton. Where's Deborah? Come on, Deborah. She's got some great things, we know we've got a lot on your agenda tonight. We're going to ask Deborah to please, you all, listen now, what we've got going on at the Hickory Hill Community Center. Listen.
Hello, I am really awed, you know. I'm back a year, and I really, really have always enjoyed working with Reva when I was here previously, over 10 years ago. So I'm glad to be back and working with the Southside again. Some of you should have gotten a packet that looked like this, that has a bundle of information in it, and we have information on our summer camps, we have information on our movies in the park, one will be taking place. One will be taking place here in July at the Blackwell area. Information, information sheet on all of our numbers for our Department of Parks, Recreation and Community Facilities. Information on summer camps, information on our pools. We have some new pools that opened up around the city, one at Battery and one in Fairmount that were recently renovated. They have splash pads. Blackwell is open, and we also have Bellmead, which used to be an outdoor pool, now it's an indoor pool. That pool is open. And so, please come out and check out the Bellmead Pool in the Bellmead Community Center because it's been renovated. Our department is responsible for not only recreation centers, we have athletics, we have aquatics, we have facility maintenance, we have park maintenance. And how many of you were aware that we also have cemeteries as part of our department? Okay? And I know people don't like to talk about cemeteries, but I think it's important, okay? Pre-planning, okay, we don't like to talk about that, but pre-planning is important, okay? Because we never know when we're going to leave this planet. And we want to make sure that we leave information for our loved ones and have our stuff in order so our loved ones are not running around trying to find someplace to bury you, okay? So, you know, we have three active cemeteries, Maury Riverside and, oh, where are you? I'm missing one, but anyway, we have three active cemetery. And River View, right, thank you. But also, come out this summer, and we have our 57 Arts in the Park, Culture Arts in the Park and Music at Dogwood Dell. Please avail yourself of the park and the lineup that we have, 4th of July. We have a big celebration starting at 5 o'clock. And so, we'll have fireworks there, so you'll have two days of fireworks. One on Brown's Island and one at Bird Park at the Carolina. Also, I met with your councilwoman recently over at Hickory Hill. And we are going to be doing some renovation to the weight room, exercise room. We are going to be replacing the pads on the exercise machines because they've worn out. We're going to be putting a fresh coat of paint, we're going to be replacing some of the equipment with your councilwoman's help. She's helping us out with that. And just doing some other things in the facility. We also will have a summer camp at Hickory Hill as well as Bellmead, as well as Blackwell. So, you know, if you're interested in participating in summer camp, your kids, summer camp starts on Monday, parents, okay? So, you need to hurry up and sign your kids up so that we don't run out of space, okay? Any questions, you can reach me at 646-5714. My name is Deborah Morton, I'm the Deputy Director for Parks, Recreation and Community Facilities. Ms. Kamala asked me to give that to you again, it is 646-5714. Just a note, I'm on vacation next week, okay?
Deborah and I go way back, way back in the day. And believe me, she's been right there when we've asked her to help us with the Hickory Hill Community Center. She's been right there. $400,000, we've been trying for over, what, Deborah, 12 years to get that money for the Hickory Hill Community Center. It's going to have a football field, soccer field, leechers, new trees, walking trail, all of that. New trees, we have new trees. And also, and also, we put $6,000, she and I went through there the other day. We're going to put new exercise equipment in there, get a treadmill. Couple treadmills, all kinds of stuff. She's going to help get it painted, we're going to get it painted, get some new Venetian blinds, clean the windows. This is all the things that she's talking about helping us do. And it's only $15 a month to join the gym. $15 a month, we all can afford that, right? Yes, we can. Yes, we will. $15 a month. Also, Larry Miller and Deborah and Mary Field, they've been working on, we are going to name the streets and the cemeteries. Y'all, listen now, we're going to be able to put the names on the streets and the cemetery so we can be able to find our loved ones. Okay? I'll let you all know more about that next month. All right, we have the firefighters here, you all have something to say about our smoke alarm, about your new truck equipment, Miss Bonnie? Duck one up here, honey, we're going to give you all one minute because we're all hungry. Come on, Bonnie. They're from 21, not 22, but 21, Station 21.
Yeah, we're with Station 21 right there here, 2505, Jeff Davis Highway. We always have the fire detection program, fire alarm. If you need one, you can give us a call at 646-8069. And for those of you that live in the Broad Rock area by Station 22, it's 646-8066. But again, it's free, just call us, we'll make an appointment, we'll come out, we can do a home safety survey for you. And we can also put in a smoke detector or just batteries if you need it. It's 646-8069, and that gets you Station 21. And 646-8066, that gets you Station 22 up by Broad Rock. And all we do is ask, just stay vigilant with your fire safety. Haven't had a lot of brush fires yet this year because we've had so much moisture. But all we need is a little bit of heat and wind and that'll kick off. And we still have a lot of house fires during this time of year as well. Even though they don't call it fire season, we still have a whole lot of house fires. So, number one thing you can do is have the detectors in the house. Other than that, if you need anything, just call and we'll be there.
Thank you all so much, thank you for all that you do, thank you so much. Okay, we have Ms. Lisa Hicks, is she here? Come on, Lisa, I didn't forget you this time, come on, honey. I forgot her last month. Come on, Lisa. Thank you, Ms. Trump.
Hello, everybody. Um, Lisa Smith Hicks, and I run a youth program, it's for African youth. We're located at 3084 Hall Street. The reason why I'm here is to let the communities know because they have been asking, what about all the youth programs? What about the youth jobs? Well, with our program, it's a mentoring program.
Can you hear you? Speak into the mic.
Okay. Got a light involvement in all new services, the mentoring program. And I have been working hard with also my team members trying to get programs and services for the kids. And we so far have partnered up with a memorandum of understanding with the Juvenile Justice for Community Services. Those kids can come to the program for an alternative sentencing. Instead of doing their community service hours inside the juvenile detention center, they actually can come out. So far, we have had five students, five youths come out and do community service with us. We have, we have them going out doing several different projects. We've worked with Restoration Lives Church on Bell Boulevard. We're trying to find a family that has an elderly that actually, we can adopt, adopt the resident every month so those kids can come out and help them out that don't have families. Cut their grass, run errands for them. We're trying to get the youth involved in doing more positive things. The sheriff asks, the kids need to be more proactive. This is one program that we're trying to get the kids to be more proactive in. The last meeting I came to, and I'm sorry I don't remember her name, but she's the one that had the accident, she fell. I remember her asking, what about the jobs for the kids? Well, with our program, we have an internship program where we're reaching out to the communities that have businesses and asking them, would they allow the kids to come in and do 120 hours of an internship where they can get job training skills and experience? And then, at the end of the 120 hours, we do an evaluation. And the business owner then they say that this youth has been very productive, come to work on time, do what they're supposed to do, dress professionally. And they may offer them a job at that time. If not, now they have the skills and training to put on a resume so they now can go for interviews. Because mostly kids right now, that's the problem they run across, is that they don't have experience for the jobs. So, we have companies that would allow the kids to come in and do internship, that builds up their experience. We have mentoring with, I've worked with Thompson Middle Schools to do communities in schools. I have a memorandum of understanding out with them. I haven't heard back because it's got to the end of the school year and I know everything got a little bit busy. I also have one pending with Department of Social Service Foster Program where our mentors can go in and work with those youth. My team and I are working really hard to try to get the kids participating in different programs. And I'm here now to let you know that it is a program, got a light involvement in all new services that's trying to help the youth to stay proactive.
So, you want to hold the flowers?
Um, we passed them out earlier, if you don't have one.
Raise up your hand if you need one. Honey, walk around, if you need one, raise up your hand as high as you can, we will give you one.
I didn't mention, I've worked with 10 through 19, so having the kids that actually want to come to the program, can you give me a call?
Thank you, Lisa, thank you. Is Yolanda, would you like to say, we have Yolanda here, she's from BB and T Bank. Honey, come up here. This is, she's a special guest, believe me, she's had, she has a meeting just about every single night. She's taking her time to come here, we're going to give her one minute, let her just say hi. Come on, Yolanda. Come on, honey. She's been a friend of mine.
Well, first of all, I want to thank you, Reva, for inviting me to come in, thank you so much. Although I don't live in this community as, I actually do live here because I work right down the street on Wansley. And I do a lot of businesses here in this community. And I know a lot of you already know me. And I want to say, my name is Yolanda Hernandez, I'm with BB and T, I'm the Small Business Officer here right down the street on Wansley Boulevard. I just want to say that, thank you, you know, for those of you that have done business with me in the past, I want to welcome you to come see me, any questions that I might be able to answer for you and perhaps give you information on things such as loans, mortgages and things like that. A lot of the times, I am able to help you, but a lot of the times, I'm able to give you information that perhaps you can use to either refinance with your current lender or if there are other options, absolutely, that's something that we provide you with. I thank you very, very much, I'm not going to take a lot of time. Yes, I'm right here on Wansley, 4710 Wansley Boulevard. And my phone number is 804-233-3980. 233-3980, and that's my direct number, so you're more than welcome to give me a call. Like I said, I feel like part of this community. Thank you so much, Reva, and I'm here if you need me. Thank you so much.
She's a good friend, believe me, when you go in that bank and talk to her, you come out knowing that she's part of your family. We're going to ask Major Odetta Johnson, major? She just come in and say hi to you? Come on, major. Come on, y'all can do better than that.
That's okay, the majority of you are my family, so. No, I just wanted to say hello on behalf of the Police Department, R.J. Tarasovik. And one of the things I think you should be excited about your community is that you come out and support each other. You come out and hear what people have to say. All that I would ask of you is that the programs that they have for the youth, if you know a youth that needs to be in that program, because we said, we need programs in the South Side, so if they have them, try to fill them. If you don't have youths in your home, I'm sure you know of some people that have some youths to give them something to do for the summer. And so far as Code Enforcement, if it's not about your house and somebody else and they're not here, make sure you share the information. And other than that, I just wanted to say hello and thank you for the support you're doing because you make our job a lot easier. When you come together and make sure you share information and you continue to support our community and our city council. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, if you got your sheets filled out, raise your hand so we can come and get them. Raise, hold up your hand up high. Mohammed? Who's got the box? We need, Lori, can you bring the box around so they can have, put them in a box? We've got some people up front. Put on the sheet whatever you want, we've had some great speakers here tonight. Anything for RHA, anything for the Police Department, Code Enforcement, write, put, write it down and put it in the box, okay? No one gets that but me. I want to thank Ron Hirsch, he's here, and also Steve Taylor, Policy Analyst, for being with us tonight. We appreciate that. And everyone else that's came here tonight, all the business owners, thank you all, all the volunteers. I want to thank all of you, okay? From the bottom of my heart, thank you. All right, the Savior's Royal, honey, would you like to say a blessing of the food? And then, we're going to have dinner. Wait a minute, let him.
Ladies and gentlemen, I could not let Major Odetta Johnson get away. Yesterday was her birthday. Could we get a round of applause for Odetta Johnson?
Let us all nod our heads and close our eyes for a moment and pray. Father, in the name of Jesus, we come before you today to just thank you for this beautiful day that you have made and we have made a commitment to rejoice in it no matter what comes our way. And right now, we'd like to thank you for our council representative, that Father, that you have poured out your Spirit and truth and leads us well, and leads us with integrity, Father, and we're grateful to her. And I pray right now that you always keep a thick hedge of protection around her. No evil will come nigh her dwelling, nothing evil would happen to her, Father. You say when an enemy has come upon her, Father, right now, like a flood, that you set up a standard against her. So, Father, and I thank you, Father, that you're doing, I want you to keep her well, Father, because we near her. She's working hard for you, representing you, letting her light shine in this community, and we thank you for that, Father. Father, right now, as we get ready to take up this food, we ask you to bless this food, we're about to receive it. Let it be used for nourishment and health and healing of our body. Sanctify it with your word and with prayer, Jesus' name, amen.
Everyone, just please sit down, we're going to have the food brought to you, so please do not stand up. We're going to have the food, volunteer is going to bring you some food. Charles has an announcement today, we'll give you 30 seconds, y'all time it, 30 seconds.
The 30 seconds is my introduction, the rest of it I'm going to just, y'all ready for National Night Out? Y'all ready for National Night Out? I've been asked to remind those, I know it's many presidents and others in here, please, let's make sure that we register. Also, let's make sure that whether or not we are even, Reva didn't tell me to say this, but I'm saying it anyway. To the business owners, we know that there have been many of years that you all have given. We know times are hard. Whether you're able to give or not, especially here on Jeff Davis where we host the National Night Out, it doesn't matter to me, we want you involved. You're still part of the community, we want you engaged. So, the business owners that are up and down the Jeff Davis quarter where we have the National Night Out right here at the grounds of satellite, please make sure you see me before you leave so I can make sure I have you on our list of recognized businesses in the community. And last but not least, one of our busy grocery stores in the community over in South Side Plaza is hosting a, something like beginning of summer, out of school affair for the kids. They're giving away free hot dogs, hamburgers, they're giving away a bicycle, they got tickets to King's Dominion. All of that stuff for the kids this Saturday. And it all starts at 3 o'clock at Community Supermarket. Now, if you see the flyer, it says 4 o'clock. But please come out there also, recording star, little kid, Prince Charles, that a lot of the kids know, he's going to be out there also to entertain the kids as well as myself DJing. So, please encourage those to come out. And Carolyn, oh yeah, Carolyn, I see you. Mr. Lee asked me to specially invite you and Keisha and the McGuaya folks because I know you all are right over there near the Community Supermarket. So, please, see me before you leave because I apologize for not talking to you earlier. But he wanted me to make sure that I talked to you all about that. Community Supermarket this Saturday, and it all starts at, actually, he just wanted to get back to the community. He just wanted to do something, all right? God bless you, thank you.
Thank you, Charles, and thank you for bringing the chairs in for us, too. Now, our next meeting is going to be when? July the 19th, Reva can't see. You all tell me when, when's the next meeting? July the 19th, right? Third Thursday, right here at the satellite, from 6 to 8, okay? You all need me, call me, my home number is 233-7382, my cell 240-5050. Thank you all from the bottom of my heart for being here tonight, thank you so much. God bless everyone of you, God bless you. God bless everyone of you, God bless you.